It is 6:01 PM on Monday, August 1st, 2022, and I am calling to order the Lancaster Select Board meeting of the same day at the same time. And I want to, before we get started, remind folks that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Sterling Lancaster Community Television, and we thank them for their continued partnership. So, before I begin, I want to do a roll call. Mr. Allison.
Here.
Ms. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Kerrigan here. We're all here. Lucky us. All right. The first item up for consideration is approval of minutes. We have four sets of minutes. There are two sets of minutes, the June 13th and June 29th. Hearings that concern or seek the approval of Mr. Allison and myself, and the remainder from the full board. So I'll ask for one vote on June 15th and July 13th minutes, if we could vote to approve those if the board has reviewed. So for June 15th and July 13th, and then we'll take the June 13th and June 29th later.
I'll have a motion to approve the minutes of June 15th and July 13th, 2022.
Three.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan. Aye. That is 3-0 on June 15th to July 13th. Jason, these next ones are between you and I. So I'd like to make, just there's a spelling error and a word shift in the June 13th. Minutes, Jason. One is that Ms. Hodges' name is, we left out an S. So we're going to adjust that at the appropriate point, which is, and I'm going to find it. So, yeah, it is in...
If I can have it on the bottom.
The second sentence of the third or fourth graph of the executive session. It states, "Mr. Kerrigan proposed that the ratification of Ms. Hodges' complaint." That sentence in itself has two changes. It should be Ms. Hodges', add the S at the end of her name, and make it possessive. And I would move that we strike the word complaint and replace it with the word warning. Would you be okay with those changes? Spelling Kate's name right and switching the word complaint to warning?
I'd like to make a motion to approve June 29th, 2022, and July 13th, 2022, as amended by Mr. Kerrigan.
Second. All those in favor? Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Mr. Allison.
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan. Aye. So those are then approved.
Is it an abstention or just two?
I think it's, the only two board members participating in the meeting were, as board members, were the two of us.
Okay. 2-0, got it.
2-0, yep. All right. And now, we are very lucky that we have a special guest come here to speak to us about Nishoba Neighbors. And take it away. Yep. I want to introduce you. Oh, thank you very much. Thank you. We are very excited to have you here.
So my name is Mary Ann Cleary, and although I've lived in central Lath for decades, I just moved to Lancaster a couple of years ago, so I'm still getting to know the town and making new friends and all that.
Welcome to town.
Thank you. For some people who have moved here. So I'm here today to introduce you, the Select Board, our Town Administrator, as well as the town more broadly and members here, to our new organization, the Nishoba Neighbors. I am a board member and the treasurer, and I also have with me the president, Catherine Fow. So, as you can see on this slide, we are a team of folks from the three towns of Lancaster, Bolton, and Berlin. We've worked together throughout the whole pandemic to create a dynamic organization to address gaps in services for those who want to age at home. So we're talking about aging at home. Our town COA and health services is very active and very responsive, but there are still unmet needs, especially with transportation, small home tasks, and repairs. So with more people staying in their homes rather than downsizing, there is a growing need for a community of neighbors helping neighbors. So the next slide, please. Ah, already there. So Nishoba Neighbors is a new 501(c)(3) all-volunteer nonprofit that provides needed services and community connection for members as they age at home. Throughout the country, starting right here in Beacon Hill, folks have identified this growing need, this gap in services for seniors, and they're creating villages of neighbors helping neighbors, while at the same time creating a sense of community. So the existing organizations, like the Council on Aging, the Friends of Seniors, they're doing great work, and our goal is to augment their services, not to replace them, not to compete, just to replace them. I guess somebody's not muted. Sorry. So, a healthy town, as we all know and can imagine, what kind of a town we want to live into. A healthy town has engaged citizens. So our activities, Nishoba Neighbors activities, support work that the town is already doing for our seniors, while also involving younger folks, you know, either families or whatever to help out the seniors. So members can be from Lancaster, Berlin, or Bolton at this point, and volunteers can be from any place in the area. As a matter of fact, I'm already working with a volunteer from Clinton, who would love to be added to the group, but at this point, we're Berlin, Bolton, and Lancaster. So maybe a question we could consider as we move forward, and then at the end, we can discuss, or you can ask me questions, of course, is what strategies would you suggest as we pursue engaging people right here in our town with this new nonprofit that supports our senior citizens? So, the next slide. So Nishoba Neighbors is especially needed as our populations grow. My understanding is that 30% of the population in Lancaster is over 60. 30%. And that number is growing as we age. So even if you're still active, you might not want to climb a ladder to change a lightbulb or replace a battery. I mean, those are some of the things we all once did easily, but now we might think twice about as we age. I know folks, as they enter their later years, 70s or early 80s or 80s, would rather not drive beyond their local area. So transportation to doctor's appointments, which aren't all local, is more challenging for them. And also, some folks need assistance for a ride, whether to run errands, or to go get their haircut, or other things like that. And with technology taking a much bigger role in our lives, look at this technology that we're using, I know how easily it is to get frustrated with new devices. And I know not all of us have a younger family member who can jump in and say, hey, this is how you do this. Instead, you can request a friendly volunteer from Nishoba Neighbors to help you out with a new device, or to fix something that you have. Also, as our social circles change, whether folks have moved away, or whether they've fallen ill, the risk of becoming isolated can be lessened if we have a community of neighbors that can help people out. Friendly calls from volunteers at Nishoba Neighbors, or even a visit. So another question I might ask is, what services do you feel we are most needed for seniors in Lancaster as we age? So the next slide, please. So we're now...
Sorry, sorry.
No, that's fine. It just took a second to load, and so. As we're now, we're now excited to be expanding our board of directors and volunteer crew, engaging with new folks who are interested in joining us. This fall, we are starting a limited project with the goal of a full launch in the new year. So volunteers are now joining our teams, and since we're all volunteers, we have folks working together in many roles. We're tag-teaming each other so that not one person has to take care of all of it, since we're all volunteers. Have I said that before? So one thing is maybe be a virtual receptionist, you know? Answer the phone, respond to phone calls, call members back, things like that. If you're good on the phone, or you like doing that. Or if you're good at sharing information, maybe join the marketing team, get out the news about the organization. You can interview members, or train volunteers as they join. You could become a board member. And join me, since I'm currently the only board member from Lancaster, so it would be nice to have more representation from Lancaster on the board. Catherine's from Bolton. So. Or you can be part of the volunteer squad. You can choose when and how you can help. You can either be a driver, you can set up the times you're available to do rides, you can do the light home repairs by replacing light bulbs or the batteries, or you can help with the yard work, maybe raking in the fall, or putting away hoses, putting in, putting out, window air conditioning, all those kinds of things that maybe when we were younger, we could do, or maybe help big the air conditioner, maybe we couldn't, we needed help, but still, that kind of thing. So we're encouraging folks to become a neighbor, helping your community, and helping with the structure of Nishoba Neighbors. And I think that's what's useful with this, is because there's software, there's a whole structure of how this works, really thought out. It's part of the global, I mean, the national village-to-village network. So, the next slide, the next and final slide. So the core of a village truly is volunteers. So please join us. These are ways you can contact us. There's even a QR code for those of you who are looking from online, that you could, hopefully that'll work.
Hey, Taz.
Hi. So, so one other question that we might consider is, how do you, what do you feel is most important for us to keep in mind as we move towards a full launch in the new year? So, that's my presentation. I presented some questions, and you probably have questions for me.
Indeed. And I think for the interest, if it's okay with my colleague, for the interest of ease, Mr. Allison, I'll go to you, since you are joining us from a secure...
Would you like me to keep this up, so people can...
No, I...
Well, maybe a little.
Yeah, it's a little separate, at least while the board is talking, so...
Maybe we'll put it on our website.
Yeah, so we'll, I was going to ask if we could share it on the website, so we'll, we'll share this information as well, and we'll promote it out through our webpage. We'll leave it up here for citizens for a little bit, and maybe our friends at, at the cable TV station will, will keep it up and running it as well. But I yield to Mr. Allison, if you have any comments or questions for Mary Ann, or Catherine, is it Catherine?
Catherine, yes.
While they are here, and then I'll yield to Ms. Turner.
Thank you. This is fantastic. The cause is super hopeful, and it's an important part of Lancaster, so thank you, and good luck, and if there's anything you'd please bring to the board, if there's anything that we can do. So this is, this is great, and looking forward to seeing you all as partners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments, questions?
I have a bias, because I was, I was on the launch team and the development, and I volunteered for years, and recently, I was like, Mary Ann, you sounded so bad, and I'm the only one from Lancaster on the board.
Well, that's true.
Because I recently retired from the board. So I know, I would encourage people, I think, as I told the board and we've discussed, that this is incredibly well-organized, well-run, insured, vetted, just the kind of thing that you want to see in a 501(c)(3) process, with some great supports. Thank you, Catherine, because she was the, the real force behind this. That the biggest thing that's missing is going forward, and I know that's why you're here, for the plea for volunteers, because the structure's there. I sit as a advisor?
Advisory board member.
Advisory board member.
Or advisory council?
Yes, yes. Yes, currently. So I have...
It's called advisory council.
Thank you. So I have a bias, as you would say, but I do think that it's a fabulous thing, and I'm really pleased to see villages have sprung up across, not just the Commonwealth, but the country, because as we all age, this is the kind of thing that people need to age in place. And I would, I know that you've been targeting a lot of our established volunteers, because that's where you find people and when you do them, but I would encourage new volunteers to look at this as an opportunity, because you can have a relatively light lift, for example, one ride a month, or something like that. It's not like being a selectman, right, Steve?
Yes. It's one day, one ride a month, that's for sure.
So I would encourage people just to start small, and it's, there's an amazing amount of need out there, but it doesn't half, it takes a village, right? So, one at a time.
Well, I echo what Jason and Alek said about how fantastic this is, and how grateful, as a citizen, I am for all of your involvement, and for your great representation of the town of Lancaster on this board. So we are grateful, we're hoping we get some folks to, to join you. I want to be clear, you're seeking, at least according to the information, we got three volunteer directors from each town, so you'd like two more of our townsfolk to join you on the board if possible, right? And then, it looks like up to a dozen or so of advisory council people, I'm assuming from all the different towns. So I would encourage folks to look at the information that's on here. I hope our partners in the media who are paying attention will post about this. I also hope that there are a lot of folks in this town who run their own fiefdoms of Facebook, and I hope all of them take the opportunity to coalesce around at least this one really good, well-thought-out, nice idea that helps everybody in town, whether you're a senior wanting to age at home, or you're someone who's looking to do some volunteer service, or you're someone whose parent might be in another community, and you're not there to help them, but you hope that volunteers are there to help them. I hope people promote this, put it up on their social media, really give you all the attention that you so richly deserve for the work that you're doing. And I will just say personally, both my parents have passed, but everything you talked about in terms of things that people need, those are the things that I would panic about when I wasn't living close enough to them to move in air conditioners, or deal with things like hoses, literally everything you ticked off, were things that I was worried about, and that's what families, you know, the strain is not just on the senior, it's on everybody involved to make sure that, that their loved one is cared for, and that they're allowed to live, not just live in their home, but live with dignity, and, and have that opportunity. And so I think this is just a fantastic, fantastic idea. I'm so grateful for you all for bringing it to, to our neck of the woods, and Mary Ann, for your leadership here in Lancaster, so thank you. I've already filled out my information on the back here, so I'll be sending, I'll be mailing that.
Good.
And, yeah, I'm just, I'm grateful to you all. And I want to thank you, and thank the board, and thank everybody else for your participation, thanks for coming in today. And before we move on, I do see the hand of the one and only Rob Zidek. Step forward, yeah, yeah, of course. Just step forward.
Can someone help us with you? I mean, I could...
Oh, we can make one. Please, make for Mary Ann.
You can also sign up right here on the back of this pamphlet.
Okay, all right, yeah, thank you very much, Rob. I want to be relieved. It's interesting we're bringing this up, because it'll dovetail what I'm going to say. There's a program, I had the acronym wrong before, serving the health insurance needs for everyone. It's the SHINE program. And I just got word that because of unforeseen circumstances and temporary lack of support from the state SHINE office, we are unable to conduct a certification training at this time, and I'm kind of bummed about it. I'm going to write something to Ms. Killcoin, she's still running, isn't she?
She is, yeah, she's running for her second term.
Okay, because I know she's interested in it. And so it won't be available until after the dreaded, anybody who says senior knows what I'm talking about, the dreaded open enrollment period. So, anyway, thank you for that. You know, on that line, I was always curious about the tax work-off program that we have. Is there a way to do a proxy work-off, like if you have a neighbor who's, who just can't do anything, but I'm willing to do the work if this person gets the credit? I don't know, maybe I'm...
It's a good, that's a good question. I don't, I don't know the answer to that, and if there isn't, we can definitely take a look at it. I know Kate and I have had extensive conversations about proposing to the town some significant changes to the tax structure around our seniors, and finding more of a sliding scale capacity. I know Kate did this in her last community, so we'll have more on that, I think, this fall. But that's an interesting concept to bring to the table, is the idea of proxy...
If you want to look it up, if you have time, it's called the Senior Means Tested. And the cities of Arlington, Cambridge, Lexington, and Concord adopted it recently. It's a multi-step process in that it goes to town meeting, goes to the legislature, comes back to town meeting. So in the shortest term, if everything lines up, it's two years. But I'd very much like to at least propose some initial language, you know, this coming annual town meeting, which would be May.
And the concept behind it, and I think we could have, we could propose that language around the senior means thing, but we can also look at other things that we might want to adopt. But the concept behind it is that we look at the means and the capability of our seniors, not just taking $1,000 or whatever off of their property tax, but look at what they are really able to pay, and look at the services that they get from the town, and try to reduce their tax burden as much as humanly possible so that they can remain in their home, still, you know, pay some baseline means-capable property taxes, but that the property taxes alone aren't the thing that's pushing people out of our town.
Exactly. And I was wondering if you could even get discount financial advisement, or maybe pro bono financial advisement. I just have all these things on my head, but thank you very much.
You're going to work yourself onto another committee, Rob, if you keep coming up with ideas.
Hopefully.
Yes, Catherine.
I just wanted to follow...
If you could just, for the record, say your first name, last name, and then your address.
Catherine Fow. And I'm from Bolton, but I'm part of the Nishoba Neighbors too. But I wanted to follow up on what Alek said about, we're not the only village in the world. We're part of a bigger network of over 350 in the United States, and there's over 20 in Massachusetts. So we have a lot of knowledge that we have to start up, and we have meetings every month, we have a conference every October. So we are always learning, always trying something new, and learning from other people. COVID really changed things for us. It slowed us down a bit, but other villages really pivoted, and, you know, they, they're doing great. So we have a wealth of knowledge when it comes to villages. And the other thing, from personal experience, I want to say, one of the really important things about a village is you have a number to call when something happens. I'm going through something with my husband, and, you know, if I didn't have such a good support system in Bolton, a lot of people don't have that. Who do you go to? It's a lot, and your life can turn on a dime, as a lot of seniors know. And where do you go? And this is one thing that you can do. You have a number to call, you have people who know where to go, what connections you can make, and can help you out. So that's a really critical part of it, too.
Well, we thank you for all the parts of it, because they're really, really important to making this village a lot stronger, so thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you, Mary Ann, I appreciate your time and the time. Sure.
First, in response to your question about the work program, my, currently, Rob, we don't do that, but I believe, I understand that we're at capacity, given the set off at any rate, but it's a, it has been done, it's a wonderful idea. The SHINE that you mentioned?
He mentioned.
That Rob mentioned, I was wondering if not at this meeting, perhaps at a future meeting, we could talk about it, because SHINE is a huge supporter, that we, we have a partner, we have a SHINE counselor signed to the center, who's great, but she is typically overbooked, over-enrolled, and as a board, if we could maybe send, after we get a chance to look at it, talk about, talk, speaking with our legislators more formally to support that, because it supports Lancaster citizens.
So you'd like on the next agenda, or we could just speak to our legislators about it?
Yeah, 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 or talk about it more formally to make it a formal vote if we need to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, to me, I don't, it doesn't require a formal vote for me, but we could certainly discuss it, and I'm glad to talk to Megan, to John. You should also send a letter to John Cronin, our state senator, too.
I will, and to Mr. Henn, both our senators, maybe get some national attention.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
There are people trained in neighboring communities, and so the town administrators have been talking about covering for one another, so we have, most of the time, the SHINE counselors are more than what we have as available space, so we would work about having a, you know, either a tri-town consortium or something like that. So I don't know as if it necessarily needs, because I would imagine that that's just sort of in the administrative function of the town, but...
Well, actually, SHINE's the one that assigns them, and our SHINE counselor is from Oilston. But it is, right, it's a mutual aid kind of thing, where people do do that, but there's still a shortage. So it was sad just to see that you couldn't have, didn't have the training. And finally, I think, I'm glad to know that you're, are you, am I getting you, you look like you're...
I just, I want to, these folks are ready to go.
They're probably the same thing, they're good, okay. And so, what you were talking about, when New York refers to a star and other things, the means testing, property tax, or something, is great. I think that's something I'd love to have, talk about formally, formally at a meeting, to have a real sort of open, like a working meeting kind of discussion about it.
Yeah, well, I only raised it in this context because of what Rob raised, too.
Right, right, no, it makes, makes perfect sense. I'm really happy that that's, that's starting, so.
Thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate all your work. Let us know how we can help. And again, anybody watching or reading about this, please promote your Nishoba Neighbors, and you can find out more about them in nishobaneighbors.org, yes?
Correct, yes.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Be well. Have a good evening. All right. We have no other folks to present, yes? So that's good, so we can keep on our normal agenda. Our public comment period, which is an opportunity for public to address their concerns, make comment, and offer suggestions on operation programs, except for personnel matters. And I will just say, before I open up to public comment, as I said the last meeting, this is an opportunity for us to share, as many citizens have had, their thoughts, questions, concerns, comments about our community that we love so much. It is not an opportunity for people to attack each other, for us to have a repetitive conversation about things over and over and over again. The intent of this is to share with each other what our thoughts are. No attacks will be tolerated, intolerance will not be tolerated, and I reserve the right of the chair to interject when necessary, if I feel a conversation or the comments are going far afield of the rules that we've established here on the Select Board. So with that, I will go to the room first, because you've been nice enough to come down here to see if, Rob, just because you've already spoken, I will, would you mind coming closer to the microphone? Just, and then, obviously, name, address, et cetera.
Lisa, angle 922 Main Street. I was just wondering, Kate, you had sent me an email stating that you had planned to restaff the senior center, and with respect to the reorganization of the five positions with respect to Health and Human Services, et cetera. And my understanding from that was that these people were meant to start in mid or the end of August, and I was wondering what the status of that was.
So I will also point out, these comments should be directed to the Select Board, and then if we seek the advice of the...
What is the, this is the same, the same question.
Same question. We are in the process of hiring a new director of Health and Human Services. Interviews are ongoing, and hopefully we'll be able to...
Okay, so it's probably not mid-August, since it's now the beginning.
Hope springs eternal, but time would seem to indicate that unless the person we hire, who we don't know who that's going to be, could give notice, et cetera. So my, my guess is that was aspirational, and that the center will continue to operate as it is right now, which is on bare bones, but we will get the work done, and we're really excited about what this new director of HHS is going to do, and the program that they are going to be able to pull together. So, and the answer to your question is, interviews are ongoing, and likely hitting a mid-August hire date or start date is probably going to be difficult.
My understanding was that there were five positions that were now open, including the Director of Human, Health and Human Services.
We're starting with the Director of Health and Human Services.
Okay, so none of the five have been filled.
We're starting with the Director of Health and Human Services.
Thank you.
There's not five, though.
Yeah, just to clarify, Lisa, I don't know where you heard the five number. Kate, do you have a...
There's just three.
Yeah.
There's three, there's a Director of Health and Human Services, a... There's a director of Health and Human Services, a recreation coordinator, and activities and outreach coordinator, that's for people over the age of 60. There was a part-time position that's in there that is currently occupied by someone. That person is out on leave for a little bit, dealing with a personal matter, so we're backfilling that.
My apologies, I thought there were two part-time positions.
Right, all right, not a problem, thank you. No, no, but I appreciate the opportunity to clarify. Rob?
Thank you, Rob Zadik, 103 Kaliva. The other activity that I'm trying to be even more heavily involved in is with environmental justice. I have attended another Environmental Justice Council meeting, and it was a very exciting meeting, one other resident that I know of was present, plus two members of MIPA who are involved a lot in our environmental justice analyses, if you will, and I'll just give you some general takeaways on this, what I learned, is that it's becoming even more and more of a driver in the things we do. My feeling is that we ought to set up our own environmental justice standards and have the standard holders, well, I would have recommended the EDC, but possibly the planning board, so that by the time we get to MIPA, you know, we've already, we already know it's going to be approved, or we already know the conditions when it's not going to be approved, because right now, it's difficult, looking at what targets going through out in the Westfield with their, with their environmental impact report, and it's tough, and they don't have the same situation we, I mean, theirs is a little bit better, some cases not so good than ours. So those are just some heads up, that that's going to become more and more, you know, in our field of view, and it's like so many other things, the MBTA regulations, the 40B, it's a little bit like driving a thumbtack with a sledgehammer, the rules are kind of tough, and they're really tough on industry and businesses like that, because it really favors the residents, to the point where, you know, you can't, you have to meaningfully, meaningfully involve the population, and you have to provide equitable treatment for them. So I don't have much more to say on that, except to say it's coming.
I appreciate it. I do want to clarify one thing, if we do agree to establish our own EG standard, EJ standards, the EDC is not, it is, its new version, as approved by the town meeting, will be getting populated at some point this late summer, fall, so if we do establish such a thing, it doesn't need to go to the planning board, it could, in theory, go right to the EDC.
Yeah, because we had such a good conversation on the EDC, I guess you can continue.
Sounds good, thank you so much, Rob. And I see one hand up, but George, George France, before I call on George, I want to make one public comment that relates to something George posted earlier today or yesterday. There's a lot of comments lately about water and water quality here in town, and George did some research, which I appreciate. We all know that the water, well, at least, the water in Lancaster is supposed to be some of the best in the area, the pipes, however, in Lancaster need an awful lot of work, and it's not a laughing matter in that there's a lot of residents out there who are dealing with really critical issues relative to the water infrastructure. I only make this point before George comments, because, although I hope I didn't just take his public comments, I apologize, George, but I did, but he posted some pretty good information about it today on Facebook. The DPW Water Department are working on a schedule that I know the previous, the select board under its previous configuration had worked with them on approving a list of streets that are getting their water pipes replaced. We can make sure that that information is available to folks, I don't have it right in front of me, but it was prioritized based on their age and condition, and so I saw more and more of this last few weeks, as people were dealing with the heat, people concerned about water and concerned about the pipes, and I just wanted to, I wanted to lift that up for everybody and let them know that the DPW doesn't plan, is engaged in it, unfortunately. This comes to a resource question, if we had millions of dollars extra every year to put toward replacing water pipes, we would be glad to prioritize that infrastructure. Unfortunately, we have the resources we have at this point, we're doing the best we can, and we're going to continue to do it, but I would love to continue to hear from citizens as they have concerns, but I just wanted to sort of shed some light on that, and with that, I will cease my public comments and yield to Mr. France. For George, George.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, you just did a very good job of touching on one of the things that I wanted to mention.
Sorry about that.
I was amazed when three guys from the water department showed up at my house today and said, "We understand you have a water problem." I said, "No, we don't have a water problem, but my understanding is that there are some water problems in town." We discussed it, but they were, you know, they were friendly, they were helpful, they were Johnny on the spot, it was just like last Thursday or Friday that I sent a note to the superintendent of the water department, you know, about this issue. So, yeah, I agree, if we had, if we had tons of money, we'd be replacing all those old water mains right now, but I know they're doing the best they can. Second item I wanted to mention is, I may have mentioned this before, but I'll probably bring it up again until we agree to do it. Almost 60% of the, of the taxable land, oh, I'm sorry, of the land area of Massachusetts, of Lancaster, is owned by nonprofit organizations. Obviously, they pay no taxes. So my hope and recommendation is that we could begin a voluntary program, it's called Payment in Lieu of Taxes, which many communities have done before, and certainly no one is required to make that sort of payment, but with so very many tax-exempt organizations, schools, churches, 501(c)(3)'s, et cetera, all these different outfits that live in our community and benefit from, from our, our way of doing things, I'd like to see them, you know, tossing in a bit of revenue to help with the revenue going down, and that's it, thank you very much.
I appreciate that, George, thank you. And you will be glad to know that in our packet, we do have a letter from RFK Community Alliance offering a payment and appreciation of services, so some are hearing you, George, and responding without us even bothering them, but I appreciate you raising it on a regular basis, and I will make a point to try to dig in to it as well. But as you pointed out, there's an awful lot of nonprofits out there, but thank you for raising, and thanks for everybody for weighing in on public comment. Another successful public comment here at the select board in Lancaster. Now, we will move on to the town administrator's report, Ms. Hodges's.
That's great, thank you, Kate Hodges, town administrator. So it's, it's been vacation season here, so it's, it's been interesting, we seem to be busiest on Thursday afternoons leading into Fridays. Town staff work on Fridays by appointment only, and I know that we've had a revolving door for folks, so that's been good that people are here. I think we're going to probably see a lot of things coming up this fall, and one of them is PJ Keating. So the last that we left this, Keating was going to get together with CEI. Providing an update for twofold, one is that there was a discussion at that board meeting, the select board meeting, that PJ Keating had paid a certain amount of money to the town, and I think we were going back between, was it 8,000, was it 10,000? And actually, we had no record of that payment, and so as it turns out, PJ Keating was more than happy to issue the payment, they never received an invoice from the former town administrator, and then there was an interim, and I think it just fell through the cracks. So we've sent them an invoice, they have paid it, it is there, we were able to pay CEI for the first portion of the peer review. The second portion of the peer review, CEI believes, will be a little bit under $5,000. We have submitted a second invoice to Keating, they have promised payment, and because they were so great about the payment the first time around, I felt that it was okay for Keating and CEI to continue, because I knew that the board wanted to get to it. So I guess I'm just making you aware that we made that accommodation to kind of keep the ball rolling, but the money, the check is in the mail, which I understand people have said, and maybe it wasn't true, so I'm ever hopeful that it is, I have no reason to doubt that it wouldn't be. So it would be very happy, or very helpful to know when the board would like to have sort of a due date for those two entities to come back, and there was a discussion at the last time we met, whether you wanted to split out sort of dust and noise, separate from something else, so it's always helpful to give the people who are doing the peer review sort of an idea of when we would like it wrapped up.
So I will, Jason chaired that meeting, and so I would yield to him first, and then to Alex on thoughts on that. I, of course, shockingly have thoughts on it, but I yield to you guys first.
So, yeah, so that, but-
Do you have a preference on when they can come back to us with the peer review?
So they're motivated, I believe, by October is the permit being up, so, I mean, I think the board has shown that we would like information ahead of time, and we prefer not to make decisions in the moment, so, you know, I'd like to think that we'll have information ahead of time, be able to have thoughtful conversation, and be forward in the best interest of Lancaster businesses.
Okay. Do you have any thoughts, time-wise? I have some, but-
Yes, I echo Jason's statement that we need to have it in some advanced notice, I'd also like, it'd probably be helpful from us to have reminders for CEI and PJ Keating of what we were looking for, what our expectations were.
Somewhere in our notes.
Because, well, just to, and I could have missed it, but, I mean, we had spoken both at that meeting and previous meetings that you and Kate didn't have the opportunity to be at, that we would have an opportunity for a, rather than the less interactive meeting that we had before, where we would have a citizens' meeting, which would address the dust, and then we did talk about the noise and water, but to have that in a more interactive format. I don't know if we have to split those out, to me, having one meeting would be enough, but that, I would defer to the board on that one. It would be great to have CEI and Keating there to present, about, talk about the hydrogeology and try to allay residents' fears. The other thing is, there are a couple of, there were a couple of lingering issues that came out of the conditions of blast permit, I'm looking at my notes, and there was a missing flow meter for stormwater removal pump that was referred to in condition 12, if we could just confirm that this was replaced, and PJ-
As part of the peer review?
Just prior to these meetings, so when we hit the next renewal and for these discussions, because I'm sure it's going to come up at the discussion, so rather than having to go bounce back and forth. The second is, thing was that there were, we were supposed to have new transducers, that they were going to put in hourly pressure transducers in the groundwater wells, and that was going to be done by April 15th, so as I said before your time, I just wanted, and that was permanent condition 25A.
I can't remember if that came up in our last meeting with them, did you bring it up?
I think we lost, that was a difficult meeting, I thought, so, but it has come up, and it will come up again, so may as well just make, just put it back on the radar and make sure everybody knows what we're looking for. So that was condition 25A, so that's, that's it for me.
So I think what we're hearing, Kate, in response is, and I, unless Jason objects, but we're fine with all of it in one meeting, rather than breaking it out. I do think, I actually thought it was a very helpful meeting, and I liked the way CEI and Keating worked together and shared information, and had sort of in-real-time discussions in front of us, which I thought was really, really helpful. So I would say, given some of the time constraints, I don't know if it's reasonable to say to them that we'd like the initial peer review to us right after Labor Day, and so that we can have a meeting in September, I think that makes the most sense, but barring objection from my colleagues.
That sounds good.
Two thumbs up from Jason, so feel free to word-sentence that to them however you like, but sometime around or after Labor Day would be great, and then we can schedule them in September.
Okay, thank you. In your packet was the town's official response to the Board of Health letter related to the community center. It was due 14 days after, so it was dated July 14th it went to them, and then I was away on vacation, et cetera, so I haven't heard anything on there that's outstanding, although since that time, we talked about getting passed an extermination. I'm happy to report that the, that we, that that did happen, and they came in and found that, you know, we don't have as much of a problem as we thought, but should obviously stay on it in regular maintenance, which had been happening. So, so I thought that it might be best to let the Board of Health know that that kind of thing had been happening, because there were traps, and we paid for it, et cetera, so I don't know about that. So we had been compliant in that area, and we still are. The World Farmers Market has come in, they are scheduling the approval of the utilities that are in there, the Smoke Hood, the commercial stove, and they've removed anything that was in there that was a problem for the Board of Health, and the issue with having sort of two entities be able to use it, or three, and any one, is that they needed to be separate storage, so the room in the back that was going to be either designated as a recreation's office or a small conference area, will now be storage for Health and Human Services Division-related food service, and so hopefully that is able to meet the Board of Health requirements, Neshoba Board of Health, that is, not our local Board of Health, and they'll come up and re-inspect, and then we can have a license to cook and serve food according to whatever they say we need to do for that. So that's ongoing. The price that we received from, we called one of the commercial cleaning companies, it's similar to Serve Pro, we called a couple, was really astronomical in terms of cost, and it, it just, it could be that I was not aware that it cost that much, but it was interesting, because the, the general part of the center was, you know, as you would expect, a few, a few thousand dollars, but the gymnasium was upwards of $8,000 to clean in the rafters, because they're saying you need to put scaffolding up, et cetera, and I guess I was hoping that they would get sort of an electric lift and be able to do it, so we, we said no to that, because it seems awfully expensive. That said, I don't think it's reasonable to ask volunteers to do that either, so I'm sort of workshopping with town staff, you know, is there a way that, that we can do it with, you know, equipment that we have, or, you know, something like that, so more to come on that, but I just felt that was really a very expensive proposition.
Do you have what's?
Questions, concerns, can we keep going? Okay. So the open meeting law legislation update, I know there's been a lot of questions about that, so on the 16th of July, the lieutenant governor, who was serving as acting, doing vacations, signed in legislation, the extended Zoom meeting allowance, so that is now going through March 31st, 2023. I think it's worth noting that the House passed an extension bill on 7/7, but their language, including content, that basically created a permanent mandate for all municipalities, that any meeting that they were going to allow public comment in person also needed to be on some Zoom platform, Zoom Teams, some other online platform, and allowed comments there. So it was essentially saying that there was a requirement to have a hybrid. And while I understand the spirit of that, and most administrative, administrators and managers do, and that would be great, it's an expensive proposition, I mean, just the owl alone, which existed before my time, but I understand was, you know, an expensive proposition and one that works. If there's another meeting happening at the same time, the town only owns one owl, and so we sort of get into this idea that, you know, there's only five days in a week, and we have far more than five committees, so, you know, what happened? So I think that the legislature has since pulled that, but has said that they're going to revisit that, and the idea is that more people can participate, so it really is a good thing, but I'm wondering if the board would want to put that on a future meeting agenda, particularly because we're coming up on budget season, and if this is something that we want to budget for in the technology budget for the town, you know, we should, we should know that. for in the technology budget for the town, you know, we should, we should know that. So the initial language said that it wasn't going to go into effect until April 1st of 2023. That has since been tabled. But I would imagine within the next 12 to 18 months, we're going to see something come down that is either strongly urging or outright requiring boards and committees, that are regulatory in nature at least, to be switching to a hy, or having a mandated hybrid.
I mean, my guess is that you're going to see the March 31st deadline extended more, given where it falls in winter, school vacations, and surges that relate to both those things. Yeah, I think it's a worthy conversation to have about whether or not we're going to expend the money. Obviously, we have to comply with the, with the state's mandate, or state's rule now. I think it is a worthy conversation to talk about, frankly, our technology in terms of access to citizens regardless, like how we can invest more resources. But as we've said at least a few times tonight, money is tight, so we have to find ways to prioritize that, but yeah.
So, you know, like that, to me, is a good discussion, because we're all committed to transparency and including as many people as possible. An owl is around a thousand dollars as a camera. I guess if you do the whole system, you begin to get talking about more money there as well. Is my, so my, my understanding is this, if we choose to do this format, a hybrid, where we have both people in person, an owl, but they are continuing to allow virtual meetings, which seems to be the preference of many of our boards and committees.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think the question to us is, do we want to add this to a future agenda? I don't want to get into supposing what other boards and commissions in town would like to do.
Not supposing, it's just, that, because anybody's welcome to use this, other than the second person, second money, right?
Jason, do you have any comments, thoughts, concerns?
It'll work itself out.
Indeed it will, as it has.
Positive.
I know. Such a positive gentleman. Yeah, so I think, so I think my only point, and I would make this to my colleagues on the board, is that when we put things on an agenda, we need to have a, well, what are we solving for? And not just have it on an agenda so that we can have a conversation, because the townspeople deserve, they see it on an agenda, that they deserve to expect that something will come of it. So I think if we're not ready to, I think having it in the future, when we're able to talk about, are we going to budget for these things? Because rather than just us having a conversation about the radicals, I would rather us do it when we have actionable steps to take, is just my preference.
Forgive me if I wasn't clear, but my idea is that I'm going to be coming in front of the board, probably in October, with here's a list of priorities that we have for capital, and we can't fund them all.
Right.
And this is one that, while it isn't a mandate right now, it depends on what we feel, you know, we should do long-term. Are we doing one hybrid system per year, for example?
Yeah.
So I'm just, by putting it on the agenda, I mean, that needs to be lumped in with fire engines and police cars and, you know, school capital that's going to be coming in and anything else that we have.
Indeed.
So Steve, forgive me a little bit, but I think we're probably saying the same thing, but it came off differently to me, because I appreciate having the heads up on it and knowing about it. And in our policies and procedures, they talk about how we cannot vote on something the first time it came up. That said, we should have an informed discussion. I think that's probably what you're saying, is have the information in front of it, in front of us, to be able to have a meaningful discussion. Is that what you were trying to say?
I'm just saying, I don't, I'm saying, if we have things on the agenda, people will expect a result.
Right.
So I don't, what I don't want to have is endless conversations about topics that don't need to be endlessly discussed, which I don't think we're saying. I'm just, I'm just using this as an, as an opportunity to insert a thought I had about how agendas get created.
Okay.
Okay.
May I bother you for that other water?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Kate, back to you.
Yep. Thank you. All right. Actually.
And that's it?
I believe that is it. Thank you very much.
Ah ha. Now we are moving into administration budget and policy. Town meeting cleanup, Council on Aging. It says here, Council on Aging, this is, so what happened at the town meeting was, Council on Aging would move from nine to five in terms of members, because my understanding, and Alex, you definitely know more about this than I would, but there was a difficulty in getting quorum with nine members.
We thought that nine people would move.
Yeah. So we've, the town meeting approved the change to five people. There are currently, I think, only, well, we'll accept a resignation today, five or four people on the Council on Aging. But we, can you take me to the, does this still have to go to the legislature to be approved? Do we have to vote as the board to send it to the legislature, or is it already there?
It's already there. Yeah, because it was a town meeting action. So initially, when this came up, we were thinking that we might be in a situation like the economic development.
Where we had more people.
Where there was more people, and the seats became less. But just in looking at it further, one of the persons that was serving on the Council on Aging, their term expired, and they weren't interested in re-upping.
All right, so we'll be down to three.
Well, actually, that left us with six.
Oh, okay.
And so the other member has submitted their letter of, or their resignation, which you can accept this evening. So that leaves us with five. Now, the only issue with the five, and I'm happy to tell you, is Frank McGory.
McGory?
Whose term expires June 30th, '24. I'm sorry, I'm doing the Zoom at the same time. Frank Mc, I'm sorry, Judith McLean, term to expire, same June 30th, '24. Jo San, Santiago, term to expire June 30th, '24. Nicole Caness, June 30th, '23, and Linda Cutler, who has asked to be reappointed for another term, which then would expire June 30th of '25.
Yes.
While the numbers are fine, the, then the staggering dates are wrong, because what we want is to have two persons that expire in '23, two that expire in '24, and one that expire in '25. And right now, we have three that expire in '24.
So.
So Kate, just a, just a point, is Jo is not on, she wasn't reappointed, she didn't want to be, last term, so she's not on the COA. She used to be.
Um, okay. I, she used to be. I went through what was down and what people got sworn in. So she definitely was sworn into a term until June 30th, 2024, and we don't have a letter of resignation, which doesn't mean that she didn't resign and.
Something we just have to look at.
Yeah.
But we don't have anything that said that she didn't want the seat.
So I would, my recommendation, so this, this, I think, is different from EDC, in that EDC was sort of, went from being an advisory ad hoc committee to a full committee. So there's a full restructuring there. This is just a reduction, the town meeting was just asked to reduce the number of folks. So if that is in fact the case, Alex, that fixes one of our 2024 folks, and we can appoint another person to have a term expire in '25, and then we have one expiring '23, two in '24, and two in '25.
I can certainly have someone call, because there, there's no more research to be done regarding whether her, I mean, people resign all the time, and they just, maybe just tell someone, and it didn't change her down.
So why don't we, why don't we get that clarification? And if Jo didn't wish to resign and wanted to remain on, I'm sure we could, I'm glad to call Mr. McGory, who was one of the finest educators in our town. I know so, because he taught me, and has been a great mentor and friend for years, and served this town in so many ways. I'm glad to speak to him and see if, if he wants to be reappointed. Next year, we could move him to a term that then would expire in '23, and then we could seek to reappoint him then. So we'd have two in '23, two in '24, and one in '25.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So you'll let me know.
I will. Yep, yep. And then, of course, if, if she did resign, you'll, you'll need to, I'll bring it, and it'll have to be retroactive to the date.
Well, then we can appoint someone, yeah, effective immediately for a term that expires June 30th, '25.
Correct. Twenty-four. She's a 24.
I know, but that would help us, we have three 24.
Oh, I see. You want to change her. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I would then propose to the board that how we restructure would be based on that.
I'm with you.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Makes sense?
Yeah, Kate, afterwards, I'll talk to you about who I think is on, who's off, because we have, so.
Awesome. Next item on the administrative budget and policy agenda is the Audit Committee. And so I'm going to do a little bit of explanation, and I'm going to lean heavily on passages to explain. Well, to clarify. So we had had a conversation, and I was not on the board when this happened, we had a conversation in previous, previous meetings, I think it was two meetings ago or so, about the Audit Committee, and how do we appoint for it, what the structure is, who will be on it, et cetera. We tasked Kate with going back to research, because there was conflicting memories or fuzzy about when the Select Board voted.
Wait a minute.
Select, selected to vote on the, on the creation of the Audit Committee. I remember when the conversation happened, and I remember when the solicitations happened, and I know I remember it, because I applied to be on the Audit Committee, when I spoke with my good friend Jay Moody about it. But through extensive research that Cheryl and Kathy did, and then I know some of us looked through the minutes ourselves, it seems the conversation, the most relevant conversation about the Audit Committee took place at the meeting on December 20th, 2021, where there was a discussion about the desire to have created an ad hoc committee, and to solicit members of said committee with a due date in January, I believe, with the hope of appointing them in February. But it appears that there was no vote taken to create the Audit Committee at that December 20th meeting. And although a number of people, myself included, submitted their name for consideration, obviously no appointments were made, because no committee was created. So do I have, do I recall that correctly?
Yes, it was, yep, December, and then there was another discussion on March 7th, '22.
On March 7th, of '22, okay.
So can I interject there?
Well, let me, I just want to, so I want to frame what I think we can do moving forward, and then I yield, just in the interest of virtual versus in-room, I'll go to Jason, then to you. My hope would be that then we take this, if this remains the board's wishes to create an Audit Committee, that we're very clear about what the charge for that committee is, that we develop a charge for that committee, and then, and a structure. And Alex, I know this is a passion project for you, so maybe it's something you would be interested in working on the charge, and what the structure is, as we, as we know, we just did this for this Council on Aging on staggering terms, et cetera, like how will this be developed and built? But most importantly, for me, what is the charge of the committee, I think needs to be fleshed out a little bit more. So my hope would be, if we're all in agreement that this is exactly the status quo, where we are, that that be the path moving forward, that someone on the board worked with Kate on developing a charge and developing a system for this board to consider for approving and establishing, if we still wish to establish and approve an Audit Committee. But again, I wasn't on the Select Board then, you both were. Jason, you were Chair, I believe, and then?
Yeah. Well, I'm super grateful for Kate doing all of the legwork to find out what was, where we are and what is left. What you described makes a lot of sense. Let's just kind of take, you know, small step back, make sure we have the charge, get organized, and move forward. So I'm in full support of that. Thank you.
Awesome. And I think Kate would say Kathy and Cheryl did a lot of work, too. I want to make sure, because she's, in all of her communiques, made sure she called out their great work.
Absolutely. Kathy and Cheryl, they did, yeah, they did a great deal of work on this, so very appreciated.
Ms. Turner?
So, yes, everything sounds good. To put things into context, and I tried to go back to SLCTV, I'm not sure if it was them or me, but the tape was buffering, because on that day, thank you, Kate, for, and Cheryl and Kathy, for finding out, for looking, drilling down, because we discussed, as Jason probably remembers, we discussed audits very, very often, especially after that DLS Inspector General presentation. And it culminated with a meeting in December that you noted, and I think the hang-up at that point was that we wanted to have the Finance Committee represented. The Finance Committee wanted to be represented, but there was some question about whether they could be represented, giving, given their enabling legislation, their financial bylaw. We also, at this last town meeting, cleaned that up. So I thought, my recollection, and you can look at the tape, it seems like we wanted to go forward. Of course, it's a new board, and we need to revisit that. I looked back at the information that I had submitted at the time of weekend wordsmith there to make it clearer. It's always good to look at with fresh eyes. I would like to send, and I can send back, that link about audit committees, so other people can benefit, because it sounds like one of these nebulous things that people might be scared of. But in fact, it's best practice, according to DOR and the IG. So we can put that out there, so people both from internally and externally who are applying can look at it.
Is this the YouTube video?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have that. I can do it.
Yeah.
So where do you?
I find it interesting.
Where do you want to share?
I'm crazy.
Would you like me to share?
I think it'd be great to be on our page, the Board of Selectments page, or maybe a link to it if when we put out the call for, probably, of course, we should revisit the people who already applied, but we may have to revisit a lot of people. I know you probably.
My preference would be to scrap the people who applied and ask them to reapply. But, and I'm one of them. I will not be reapplying, by the way. And I want, I do want to point out that my position on this, and sort of stepping back and, and sort of getting a cleaner version, this is not because it's a new board, or that we want to reconsider the concept, it's that there was no vote taken to create the committee. So it's not as if I'm looking as a new board member to scrap previous work done. Just, I just want to be clear, because you said, I know it's a.
No, it's not so, no.
It's not.
I'm sorry, and there's one other thing, that sometimes it's referred to as the ad hoc Advisory Committee, and sometimes it's referred to the Audit Advisory Board.
Right.
And the two are actually statutorily different, so there probably needs to be some discussion on which one.
Well, so I'd like to hear what, as the chief proponent, I don't want to assign a hashtag to you, but the chief proponent of this concept, I'd just love to see what that, like, because you're right, there's drastic difference between advisory committees, ad hoc committees. Ad hoc committees are appointed for a specific task, and once that task is accomplished, one way or the other, that ad hoc committee goes away. So I'd like to get a sense, I'd love to see a proposal as to what this Audit Committee's charge will be, how its committee will be made up. Are there, like, is it automatically a select board member, finance committee, like, how is that constructed?
That's for you to figure out. I'm happy to go work on that and work out with you, Kate, so we can present a more meaningful.
One that's actionable would be good, yeah.
Actionable, yes.
Well, and I gave you guys, the three of you, board members, an email on July 14th that has some language in there, so you can pick whether you like ad hoc, I mean, I would, encourage it not to be, because I think you want it to happen every year, which makes sense.
We should banish the word, the words ad hoc from the conversation relative to the Audit Committee.
It could be very limited. We're using them a lot more than we should.
Well, I was just trying to outline all of the ways you could do it.
Yeah. A little more Latin in our lives is always nice, but it's not the proper use of, the way we use ad hoc sometimes is not the proper use. So you will take on this noble charge and report back to the board. Fantastic. Thank you. March representative, Kate?
Yes, so our March representative was Alex, am I correct on that?
Uh huh.
Yep. And so the question from the March Board was, who are we going to have in her, in her stead? I went to the last meeting. It's a lot of numbers, a lot of math, there's a lot of information. I really felt like I had half a loaf, because I didn't, I didn't quite figure out. So it's a good thing if somebody really wants to understand how much they do, not just for Lightcaster, but just in general.
Sure.
But I think it probably belongs either in the Health and Human Services Department or in one of those, one of those boards. You know, arguably, Alex, in her capacity as COA Director, probably knew what they were talking about much more than I did when they started to discuss that, but we don't, we don't have that yet. So they were looking. I've said that I didn't think that it was great to take on yet another committee, only because they meet almost at the same time as the Devens E911 does. And that one really does need to be town administrators, that's actually called out in their letters of incorporation. But I can do it until we have somebody. But I just, I know they were looking, and they want to respond, so we.
Do they have a, is it very clear, like, it is, is it just someone appointed by, that could be Johnny off the street, or is it, is it typically COA Director, is it typically a?
It was really a mix, to be honest, and there was. It was really a mix, to be honest, and there was, there had to have been 25 people on the call, and some had, like, Lemonster, for example, had three people, so I assume that it depends on population, or just three people really wanted to be on it, but I defer to you, Alex.
Well, speaking to somebody who's done it for...
How many years?
Sixteen years. Some, and so I think there's a lot of confusion about my different hats and wearing things, but when I, the first nine years I was a Selectman, I was also a MART, I was a MART person. There are COA meetings, I think this is me, I'm just going to, that wasn't, that wasn't you?
No.
Wasn't me?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, I'm gone now. So, what's it going to get, so, in the case of Lemonster, to be honest, the way MART works, and it's not getting into the weeds, is every city and town has one vote on a committee, there is a lot of support staff and other people who go, and that vote is weighted by population. So towns do not have a lot of say, because Gardner, Fitchburg, and Lemonster swamp us in populations, so we're really advisory, and in the towns, sometimes you COA Directors, sometimes it's just a general representative, a lot of times they would come from planning or Selectmen. It's interesting, I'm happy to have somebody else do it, I'm happy to continue in my role as the Selectman as I have in the past.
Sold.
Until we find somebody else.
Yeah, I have, anyone willing to serve, I don't have a problem with that. So if you're willing to...
Yeah, I don't think I have fallen off, to be honest with you, but it's probably because my communications went through my old email.
The way that you were appointed was because of the other role, so it could be just that Alex is appointed as a Selectman.
No, yeah, we'd have to make a new one.
Yeah, because it used to say in parentheses, "representing Selectmen," so that's why I thought...
What they, what they had just said the other title, so...
Awesome. Well, Mr. Allison, is there a motion to appoint Alex Turner to be on the MART board for the town like...
I think, because I think it has to be under Appointments and Resignations, we have to put her on next...
Oh, all right.
But the good news is that they don't have a meeting until after week next time.
At least now we know anticipation for the next meeting.
I just don't want it to be unofficial.
Time to find somebody else.
But that's what I'm saying, however, speaking to all those volunteers we just talked about for Nishoba Neighbors, if somebody would like to represent, it actually has a planning impact right now to talk about that, too, so maybe somebody from there will come up.
I would suggest that we put Appointing Alex Turner on the next agenda.
Okay.
Understood.
All right. Next item up for bid is discussion of liaisons to boards and committees, defining the roles of liaisons and assigning liaisons.
Do you want me to just let you know the research on this one?
Uh, sure, yeah.
So it seems like we have a lot of folks that say, "I'm a liaison to this or to this," so there could be more out there, but as far as what is in print, liaisons are appointed by the board and are the board, so, three folks, every year, either right after the election, or it could be mid-year or some other time, if the chair changes.
Oh, I see.
No, if the chair changes. And so the current liaison positions that are called out either in the town code, or in the charge, or because of past practice, are the Planning Board, the new EDC, and the older Ad-Hoc Group, the Finance Committee, the Library Trustees, the Public Works Board, and the Housing Authority. And I'm happy to obviously give this to you all. So the liaisonship that can be delegated to the TA, and that doesn't mean, it means to the TA then to staff...
Yes.
Is the Council on Aging, the Disability Commission, both the Historical Society and the Historical Commission, the Conservation Commission, MART, although we just seems to have taken care of that one, Recreation Committee, we have something called Ceremonies and Celebrations, but I think that we call it something differently, but it's called out as Ceremonies and Celebrations.
So Conservation Commission, MART, and then...
Recreation.
Recreation and Ceremonies, right.
The ceremonies, I can, just historical note, that was from the, our former, our anniversary, the 350th, we had that, so...
Okay, the Board of Health, and then the Board of Appeals. So, I mean, I think that the idea is that there's six, and I would imagine, because Library and Public Works are separately elected boards, so that would make sense for the connectivity...
So is Planning Board, and Finance Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant like departments, I meant like not, you know, where their structure is a little bit different. And then, you know, the others are very heavily regulatory.
Yes.
And EDC was just new, and I think it, that obviously makes sense, so what you want to do with that information and how you want to do it, but it probably should be something that, much like you do the election of a chair and things like that, maybe you do that.
Can you indicate to me who the, since I'm, obviously none of these, since I wasn't on the board?
Yeah, I only know Planning is you, Alex, right?
Well, so, to my knowledge, we haven't, I've been doing Planning, just that, you know, in a sort of informal way, but to my knowledge, we haven't formally had a meeting where we've appointed liaisons in the last, yeah, and that we're supposed to, according to our policies and procedures. And yeah, it does spell our time, but I think it's something that fell through the cracks. In the past, we tried to group them by like disciplines, so under all the planning offices would be the same ones that are under their conservation.
We did this when I was last.
Yep, yep, and it makes, and it makes a lot of sense. And that's not to exclude the administration out of any conversations, it's more just another conduit.
And my, my understanding is the reason why, although that's my question about the Board of Health, the reason why the rest of these are under the TA is that these are, except for the EDC, right, elected by the people.
Other than the EDC being the outlier, but I think that was only because it's so new.
Came after we did that.
Yeah.
So the logic being, you had ones, the TA liaised with non-elected, like appointed commissions.
Sure, so like the COA wasn't, wasn't the TA, it was the Director, and the Recreation wasn't the TA, it was the Recreation. That was sort of their, the Board of Health, the actual, the town calls out a health agent, we just don't want one to happen.
The one that's elected, so that's...
Yeah, so I mean, you can move any of them, these are not, these are not anything that requires town meeting, I just was trying to figure out where things...
There was a list, it used to be just like a basic little spreadsheet or chart, have you seen that?
Um, yes, I, it was very little, because it only had three groups on it.
I actually, I actually have a little one, but dinosaurs roamed.
I will happily take whatever you might have in the archives.
So I think this is, this is very helpful, I would ask the...
Oh, Jason is raising his hand.
Oh, I was going to ask my board colleagues, starting with Mr. Allison, what his, what their thoughts are on this, and how, Mr. Percy, Jason?
Yeah, so, kind of giggling a little bit, because I asked this question about two years ago, and I think I might be getting the answer from this list pretty good. You know, of a share that is not documented anywhere, though you will see some, the word, you use liaison at times. So yeah, I would be motivated to just formalize whatever the policy is we want, and move forward, and let the research end, that's my opinion.
Sounds good. And that was going to be my question, was is there, I know in practice, but is there a policy written that assigns us? So I think step one is coming up with a policy that defines why and how we do this, and to what organization, to what boards and commissions, that's just what I'm suggesting, and then populate those liaison slots.
Do you, any of you know if any are missing, have you been a liaison to a group that hasn't been mentioned?
When I was last on the Select Board when dinosaurs roamed, I was, I believe, FinCom, I definitely was FinCom.
Okay, we have that.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I don't think there was, I was anything else. And Public Safety is not on here, but I assume that's because they work hand in glove with you and with the board.
Well, you do have, Steve Heliger. I was not, Steve Heliger, who served with me way back when, was liaison to Fire, right after you, was Police and Fire.
Oh, maybe that's, maybe I did Finance and Police and Fire.
Yeah.
If that's what I...
So, so now you're getting into a very different situation, where the liaison, at least by the way, a Select Board liaison, is sort of an ex parte member of an elected or appointed board, versus having a liaison to a town general fund department.
Right, which is why I'm not, which is why I'm not suggesting...
They're like, it can happen, they just have to be separate policy.
I'm not suggesting that we go back to that, because of that exact reason, it's, and I think also a good discussion of our next item on our agenda is how the board interacts with folks, but I think it makes sense with elected boards and commissions, that the elected Select Board liaises with them and works with them, and then non-electeds, with potential one or two exceptions of committees, that the TA does that.
I think we should have the discussion, because it may be, there you go, I see.
We can, I think, I think it starts with a draft policy.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
You know, something to look at as a board, and then make a determination, and then, once we sort of figure out what the, what the what is, we then can slot folks into those, into those positions. So...
So, other than Public Safety, are there any other elected or appointed boards or committees?
I want to make sure, I do not think Public Safety should be...
Right, no, I had that one, but were there any other?
No, not that I can think of.
Okay.
Anything you can think of, Jason, Alex? Nope, got it.
Kate, did you write down, or could you send them to, because I didn't shot them together?
Yeah, 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 of course.
So I would say, Kate, not to give you...
No, that's fine, why don't I kind of put together what I gave you here, and then maybe it comes back to the next meeting and you decide what's missing, or are they in the wrong buckets, meaning, I'm thinking, other than the EDC, which is the outlier, it's sort of the elected, elected by the people, has a direct liaison, and the...
Appointed by the people.
Appointed by the Select Board, again, with the exception of EDC, goes through the TA, which in turn then goes to the relevant town staff, so like Conservation is, has Jasmine as the Planning and Community Development Director.
How do you, DPW and Library, independently elected boards?
Well, they are still elected by the same people.
Right, but they're elected.
Yeah.
What's interesting is the Board of Health is elected.
I know, that's my one question.
That seems to be, so, I think if...
But also, we're in the planning office, so...
Well, so if there's a time that we want to change for consistency's sake, given that there wasn't a policy, this might be a good time.
So that would, my one thing would be the Board of Health, because it is, if we're using that clear, although our one exception is of course the EDC on the other one, but I would say, bringing the Board of Health into a Select Board liaison slot, I think makes the most sense. And then I don't know that, I mean, I'll yield to my colleagues, but I don't know that there's need for us to, we can talk more right now, and then give you that charge, rather than having to go back and read the list later.
That's great, all right, so Board of Health is moving.
That would be my recommendation.
So the ones that I had as sort of staff liaisons are Council on Aging, Disability Commission, Historical Society and Commission, Conservation Commission, MART, Recreation, any type of Ceremonies and Celebrations, there's various things that they're called, and then the Board of Appeals.
Meaning that they don't have a select person?
Those are TA liaisons.
Well, and so it says it can be delegated, so I think we could keep the language "can" in case there's ever a time that you don't want to delegate it.
I think that makes sense.
See, I think it's important, I always think that people have to understand the reporting structure, and it can get murky, but I think it's important for a Selectman leader's policy that we do have that contact. I know your concern is always not to interfere, which is legitimate, not to interfere with your roles at TA, because you still do have influence with all the boards and commissions, less so with the independently elected ones like Library, but even then, I know the Library and DPW often seek support from the Selectmen's Office.
Sure, I, for the record, I don't think the TA has any authority over any board or commission, I think those are, if there was ever an issue, I think it would be funneled to the board, you all.
Yes. I just think from a, from a reality of workflow and, and day-to-day interactions within the organizations, these are folks that are not independently elected and reporting directly, or working directly with the TA, makes the most sense.
They are appointed by us, and it worked really well, I was not...
A lot more appointed by us, yeah.
Yeah, I was not the Selectman, I was not the designated to the Historical, and I don't think in my time, I moved around, but they did lean heavily on theirs.
I mean, it doesn't say, like, I met with the Disability Commission this week, which by the way, Mike McQ, thank you very much for that very, very thoughtful meeting, and thanks to your fellow Disability Commission members for the work that you all are doing. I mean, it doesn't say that we then can't meet with them, and they can't have our phone number, and can't call with us, and, and work on things together, it's just a matter of the first call on working things out for the town would be to Kate or that structure.
Well, it would be, any, what do you think, and that's the, that's the thing, is I guess we'll need to come up with a definition of liaison, because I think the first call would always be to Kate.
That's why my suggestion is, my suggestion is develop a policy.
I don't like that policy.
No, it's not, no. My question is, that's why you can develop the policy, but that she develop a draft policy for us to consider. Her question to us then was, did we want to look at these lists again at the next meeting, and then a policy thereafter? I think we can, at least I believe we're 99.9% there on how we're doing these up. If the will of the board is to wait another meeting, that's fine, I would just want to be very clear, I think it's more important that as we get into budget seasons and things, that we establish those liaisons and get rolling.
Right.
So the question is, do we want to look at these lists again, or are we okay just reviewing this quickly?
I'd like to look at the list again, but I like to prefer, I like to group them by like disciplines.
Well, how we assign them is a different question, this is establishing a whole system, then we can, I agree with you, like disciplines.
I just think there's merit to having all the ones that you talked about, also having a point person, rather than the shock and approach of calling each one of us, or whoever they feel is their most or least favorite of the day.
So you would suggest have every one of these have a Select Board Liaison?
Yeah, things like, there's some that I don't think are going to be very...
Well, I would, okay, then I guess, come back to us with lists and, and a draft policy. I will tell you right now, I don't, I would not agree with a policy that has all of these having Select Board Liaisons. I think having Planning Board, EDC, FinCom, Library Trustees, DPW, Housing, and Board of Health have Select Board Liaisons makes sense, and the remainder have liaisons with the TA, I think makes all the sense in the world, but we could certainly have the conversation. But I, I can't, I will, it would be hard to see myself getting there.
Okay, we did the conversation, but if you could send over the list, Kate, we can, and I'll mull and...
You've got it, no problem.
Thank you.
Yep.
So at the next meeting when we discuss this, we'll look at a, whenever that is, doesn't have to be at the next actual meeting, there'll be a draft policy.
Well, the reason it comes up is because the budget book that I'm trying to create will have the chart where folks can kind of look at it in illustrative form of where, where this board sits relative, so obviously, if they're appointed by the Select Board, that'll be the thing at the top, but it's good to know.
So might I suggest, as you're developing the policy, you send these lists to the board, if Jason or Alex, you have questions, comments, or concerns about where things sit in these breakout, before we review the policy, that you weigh in with Kate about that, and then we can, I'd like us to end the next meeting, we have with a vote approving the policy, and having some sense of who we're going to assign to, to those liaison slots, if that is amenable to the board.
It's fine.
Thumbs up? Thumbs up, nice, thank you. Anything else on that?
Uh, no.
Next is discussion of Select Board Members working through the Town Administrator and Staff individually. This is something Kate and I have discussed, and I want to make sure we discussed here, and this is really trying, and this is really good lesson for myself, as well as my board colleagues, to make sure that we understand the power dynamic with town employees, and the work that they do for and with Kate, and for the entire town, and the board is an extension. And so my hope would be that Select Board Members fight the urge frankly to call or email town staff directly to ask for things, assign them things, do things, without going through Kate and her office first, and here's why, because I don't know what is going on in any particular office on any particular day, and if I, but I do know is, as Select Board Member and Chair of the Select Board, if I call a town employee and say, "I'd like you to do X, Y, and Z," even though X, Y, and Z is literally the last three things the last three things they have on their list of things to do, and they're really focused on A, B and C, they're going to drop and do X, Y and Z, and that's not necessarily, I may think in that moment it's best interest of the town, but it's not, whereas if we funnel those, um, that work, um, through Kate and her office, I really firmly, and I'm not trying to stifle communication with town employees, I'm just trying to say, I feel like it will lead to a better, stronger workflow for us, uh, and will allow for very clear, um, communication lines within town departments, there is, it is, um, uh, easy to understate, um, but like, the power dynamic between us calling a, a, a town employee and saying, I'd like you to do this, um, may seem like, we may assume, well, they'll do it when they've got time, or they'll do it when, uh, they think they should prioritize it, they're not going to, they're, the reality is they're going to put down everything else they're doing, focus on it, uh, and it'll be to the detriment of whatever they were focused on if that was, if that was appropriate, so, um, I wanted to bring it to here to discuss it, and I'm, I asked Kate to comment on this and, and the board, um, but I think it's important that we establish, um, at least a working, um, understanding that that is the, uh, how from an operating perspective, how we'll operate as select board members. Thoughts, did I ramble sufficiently enough to make that?
No, I just, I think that, you know, when any board member contacts someone, just like you said, that the staff here want to do a good job and they want to provide boards and committees, particularly the select board, what they want in a timely fashion, and, you know, hopefully, you know, we can do that in a, in a, in a good way, but, um, I think there's a hesitation to sort of say, well, I had X, Y, Z, and then they feel like they're going to be in trouble, and so it, it has been just challenging to try to navigate that a little, and it doesn't happen often, but when it does, I just feel like there's a lot of aches with town staff that they're going to be in trouble, and that doesn't mean that there's any reason that they should think that or that it's ever happened, but.
Right, and that's, it's, it's, um, it, A, doesn't respect their workflow and their, um, and it's not anyone's intention to do this, right?
Oh, no, not yet.
It's just the happenstance of, um, the positions that we're in, um, just creates a dynamic that would, I think, be unhelpful, um, to the staff and in the end to the town, because they're not getting what we need done, and we may think we've got the right sense of priorities for their office on any given day, but that's the reason why we hire them, and we are cadres to help prioritize them, so, so, I've now definitely rambled on too long about this very topic, but I wanted to make sure it was addressed, and Mr. Allison's hand is up in the air.
Yeah, I, I completely agree, I believe the NMA also agrees, you know, the select board should not be involved in any of the day-to-day activities of the town, which really a policy made to the board and all of the day-to-day interactions should be delegated to the town administrator, so, and then for you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is one of those things that we all, all obviously agree on, um, and that's something that's going to help with the liaison role, because one other thing, having served as a staff person too, there's a fine line, you want to make sure that you're supported, I remember having, um, occasions, events or something, and you didn't feel that you could reach out or talk or do this kind of stuff, so there has to be an understanding that, um, you know, for residents, where leaders to be supportive, but obviously not to micromanage or undermine the work of the town administrator, but still be accessible.
Yes.
So.
Fantastic, um, so I don't know that that needs to be a policy, but maybe it does, um, I hope it's a working understanding and.
I think it's in the policies.
Um, if it's in the policies, then we need to make sure everyone adheres to it.
Yeah.
So, I don't believe there's any motion necessarily relative to that, yes?
No, thanks.
Sounds good, um, next, we have, so this is not on the agenda, so should we adhere to the next agenda?
Um, yeah, I think, I, I guess, I think we thought it was part of five where it was just like an appointing thing, but it can, it can totally wait, except for, you're going to have, so, we, and that's not on there either, we need to hire the police officer.
Yeah.
So, we'll have to put that on.
As soon as possible.
The August, yeah, August fifteenth, yep.
All right, next, um.
I'd be happy to know it is on the policies and procedures.
I'd be happier to know that we're adhering to the policies and procedures.
Yeah, yeah.
So, appointments and resignations, uh, first one up, I feel like I, um, lifted the curtain a little bit on this in our last meeting when I was discussing the Minuteman School Committee, um, Jen Leoni, uh, who has served the town in many, many different capacities throughout her career, um, has been on the Minuteman School Committee for us for a very long time, and has, um, gracefully asked, um, to be relieved of that responsibility and has resigned, um, we do need strong candidates, uh, for the Minuteman School Committee, so if you are a Minuteman, um, school family or know someone or have great interest in the work that they do, which is incredible, um, it's important that we have a strong voice on that committee, so we thank, um, Jen Leoni for her incredible work, um, we know she has not done serving this town because she doesn't know how to stop, um, giving of herself and supporting our community, so we thank you for your service, um, to the, uh, school committee, and look forward, uh, to getting you on some other board or commission sometime, uh, sometime pretty soon, Jen, thank you, uh, second, we have, uh, and then we can accept these on lock, um, second, we have Ann Mazzola's resignation from the Council on Aging, um, Kate had, uh, alluded to that earlier, I thank Ann for her strong service, um, to the Council on Aging and to the town of Lancaster, we're grateful for your strong support, uh, and wish you well in your future endeavors as well, Ann, so, um, with that, is there a motion to accept those resignations?
Point of information, um.
Well, okay.
There's not a motion yet.
Okay.
So, it's a point of information, is the Minuteman School Committee member, I don't think we can accept because it's appointed by the moderator, I believe.
But we need to get people to submit into the town.
That's fine, you can ask them to submit to the moderator, yeah.
I, I thought that's what I had done, so if that wasn't what I had done, I apologize.
No, I thought you said, can we get a motion to accept both these resignations?
Both these resignations, yes, yeah.
Can we accept a resignation that's appointed by the moderator, is what I'm saying?
The letter was written to us, I believe we can accept a resignation.
Can we?
Appointed by the moderator.
Oh, okay.
I thought you were talking about the appointee to fill a position, sorry. So, is there a set motion?
Oh, Jason, I.
Typically, the clear commission, would you call it the commission?
No, I'm fine, I'll offer a motion to accept the resignation of Minuteman School Committee member Jennifer Leoni and the Council on Aging member Ann Mazzola, affect both affected immediately.
All right, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye, three, zero, zero, uh, and we have one reappointment, which is to the Council on Aging, Linda Cutler.
I'll offer a motion to reappoint Linda Cutler to the Council on Aging with a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty-five.
Aye.
All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye, three, zero, zero.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I missed something in my town administrator's report.
That's quite odd.
I'm sorry, I, I wanted to just give a, a thank you on the record, um, to the friends of the COA Chair Denise Hurley and Jean Syria, Dave and Sheila Maya, Phil Eugene and Deb and Gary Resonowski, um, and many, many other residents, but mainly that, that core group of folks who did quite a bit of painting, um, and, and some kitchen cleaning and, you know, some outside sprucing up, and it really was yeoman's work, and, um, they just, they did an unbelievable job, so, I'm sorry that I missed that, and that was the most important part of.
It's never too late to thank someone, so.
So, thank you to all of those folks and for, uh, Deb for kind of spearheading and, and getting everybody on board.
Awesome, thank you, um, all right, now we are on license and permits, uh, we have three of them, we have an application for public entertainment, um, and, um, Jason's comment about the clerk reminded me, I've been reading a lot of these things, Jason, am I supposed to be doing all of these, um, you're right on the, I remembered it the second you said it, that the clerk's supposed to do the appointments and resignations, so I apologize.
Just, uh, just me being fanatic, not a, not a big one.
No, 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 I just didn't know, is there a license and permits, like, is somebody else supposed to do that, or?
Particularly, but, I think I read that somewhere, that's some.
All right, so, let's roll with three, um, applications, um, two relative to the Bolton Fair, um, uh, do you want to read them, or would you like?
Um, certainly, I'm just looking for the second page, I shuffled it, so I'd like to, um, offer a motion, this came through as a renewal, is that right, Kate?
Yes.
Okay, uh, for a renewal application for Dean and Flynn, doing business as Fiesta Shows, uh, for the Bolton Fair, and, and applicant, also a renewal for the application for dancing, sports, games, fairs, exhibitions, plays or entertainment on pilot diversion on a Sunday, and the first one is.
Yeah, can you read them as the, just so we update some times in case, I can do it, that's.
Okay, you can go right ahead.
Okay, uh, it's an application for public entertainment, weekends and, uh, weekdays and Sundays, Dean and Flynn incorporating due business as Fiesta Shows for the annual Bolton Fair, August eleventh to fourteen twenty-two, Thursday, five to ten p.m., Friday, noon to ten p.m., Saturday, nine a.m. to ten p.m., and Sunday, nine a.m. to nine p.m. at the Lancaster Fairgrounds at three eighteen seven Bridge Road.
Aye.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Just a quick question, we, is it a renewal every year, Kate, or what is it?
It's a renewal every year, yeah.
I know, so, but you missed the discussion, so I thought I'd just ask, quick, sec, I'll vote a.
There you go, Mr. Kerrigan, aye, three, zeros, zero, what was your question?
She said yes, I said, is it a renewal every year, I would just think it'd be a new year.
The, the second one that you have, which is the Hawker and Pedler's license, requires no action, there was a, um, a misunderstanding between the applicant and the Nishoba Board of Health.
Okay.
They require a Hawkers and Pedler's license for anybody at the fair from the state, not from the municipality.
So, do we need to vote on the application for use of town green?
You, you will just say no action, but the town green one, yes.
Yes, okay, so no action on number two, which is the application for Hawker and Pedler's license for the Texas Grill.
I move to, um, approve the application for the use of the town green and gazebo made by the Thayer Memorial Library hosting animal adventures, um, on August sixth, thirteenth, twentieth, twenty-seventh, from ten thirty to twelve thirty.
Aye.
It says P, um, PM.
Yeah, twelve thirty PM.
Yep, you're right, afternoon.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye, three, zero, zero, uh, all right, and again, there was no action taken on the, um, Hawker and Pedler license, uh, we appreciate that clarification, Ms. Hodges, um, new business, appears to be none.
There, there isn't, there's, yep, none.
Uh, communications?
Well, so this is Mr. Frelick, who, uh, we had not been, um, we had not been successful in contacting, but we included his handwritten letter to the Select Board of Lancaster, where, um, if I could paraphrase, he would like a sidewalk on his street, he sees lots of people biking up and down the street, and he can tell each of them would like a sidewalk.
Oh, wow.
Also, children live on his street, and he's eleven years old, and he can only bike in the graveyard, and his mother would like sewer hookup.
I saw that, yes, and he drew a nice picture of his house.
And a smiley face.
And a smiley face, which is nice, um, he doesn't put his address, though, oh, Barker Road, got it, um, uh, I still think it would be great to have a conversation with Mr. Frelick here before the board, and, uh, so hopefully we will, uh, let's keep that on our communications until we can get him to come on in here, um, because it would be great to hear from him.
Absolutely, and he has very, very nice printing.
He really does, yeah, it's, it's very, it's far better than mine at age something older than he is, um, uh, so we thank him for his interest, um, uh, all right, uh, there's, then, then, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, so the last one is the RFK Community Alliance, and, um, interestingly, this, this brings about the point that, um, the board should have a gift policy in that you should vote, um, in public session for anything that's over five hundred dollars, um, because that would be consistent with mass general law, so, um, at the next meeting, uh, or maybe the one after, I'd like to just bring up a policy for you all to adopt, but, um, if, if you wouldn't mind, just for the sake of felt and suspenders, to vote to accept the ten thousand dollar very generous gift from RFK Alliance, Alliance to the town of Lancaster as a token of their gratitude for public services provided to them on a regular basis.
So, I would, um, offer a motion to accept the gift, uh, from RFK Alliance of ten thousand dollars to the town of Lancaster for their assistance.
Aye.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want, because I know Mr. Franz has brought this up and other people have, um, that pilots are something that we do need to pursue individually, I'll say that as a, as a person, um, I do want people to be aware that nonprofit land does bring us a lot of benefits in the case of RFK Community Alliance and Perkins, um, there are, it's a great, not only a great resource for the community, but also one of our largest employers, and Perkins, in the past, before they emerged, has given us ten thousand dollars, um, annually, so they're not, uh, and depending on the legislature, we sometimes get a wee little bit of pilot money, um, but not nearly enough, and we really need to advocate for that, because most of the land in Lancaster is, um, state or federally owned, Devon's in that case, and the feds haven't been giving us a big check, though it would be nice.
Um, yeah, so I would, A, thank RFK, um, Community Alliance for the, um, contribution and echo, it's important, a pilot is, um, somewhat a term of art, but it's a legal term, I believe, that's negotiated.
Payment in lieu of taxes.
It's payment in lieu of taxes, um, this is a payment and appreciation of services, which is very important to note.
Yes.
Typically, a pilot is negotiated when someone's coming into town and they're, they're establishing a new, um, uh, organization, and either their tax bill will be discounted or not at all, and so they would, um, agree to a payment in lieu of, um, so I think Mr. Franz, who rightly brings this up on a regular basis, would like us to look at the scope in its widest aperture, and I appreciate that, um, but we, it is important to call out, not only are they a big employer, but they are a great partner to the town and to the people, uh, in our greater Commonwealth, and so we're grateful to them for the work that they do, and we're really proud to, to host them here in Lancaster and grateful for that contribution, so, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye, three, zero, zero, uh, there are two other communications, one is just about our next meeting, and then another is a popem report for landfill environmental monitoring report, that's just in the packet, there's no.
It was in the packet, it's, it's well over a hundred pages, um, but yes, and there's nothing that you need to do, it was really just sent to us as FYI.
Is it, um, possible to discuss this at another meeting or quickly or maybe, it looks like we may need to allocate some, we need to be aware of it as a board because it may require some funding issues, and there's a couple of minor issues that we need to look at.
So, do you want to discuss it before budget, because it?
Well, I can discuss it now, as it was here, just to set, put it on the radar if you want to, but, um, this, thank you very much, this is something that's long overdue and getting done, and extremely important, because the risk for not monitoring the landfill, which we have not been doing enough, um, is huge, um, we all know towns that have experienced that, so thank you for getting this done, we, I don't think it was budgeted, that was one of the discussions, um, so it needs to be in this budget, and the other thing is that the engineers in their executive summary found some issues, um, nothing for residents to be concerned about, but, um, there's missing, a missing monitoring well, missing monitoring well number one, and, um, some other broken things that need to be repaired, so if we could cost those and add them to our.
So, we should have it as part of the budget conversation?
It should, but in order to have it in the department, we have to know what we're, you know, introducing, so yeah, we need to figure out how much the cost is, yeah, yep, just how much monitoring and.
Well, yeah, why don't we, so why don't we just, let's put it on the future agenda, we could look at the executive summary and see if we can.
Before the budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, just to get a praise to slide into the budget.
All right, and then, um, the last item on communications, uh, is our next hybrid meeting will be held on Monday, August fifteenth at six p.m., as you all know, uh, which will take place both here in the Nashway Room and in the interwebs, um, uh, as we know, we are, we've returned to our regular schedule of first and third. As we know, we are, we've returned to our regular schedule of first and third Mondays of the month. Of course, we return to it the month before, the first Monday is going to be Labor Day, so I just ask that we consider, as we schedule for September, how we're going to address that. We could have a meeting the Monday before, I would have to zoom in, that would be the twenty-ninth, I would have to zoom in for that, or we could just resume on the third Monday of September, so we do the fifteenth, and then we would do the...
Sometimes we move to Wednesdays in that case, or Tuesdays, so it depends, I guess, to see what the workload is.
Yeah, let's just look at this at our next meeting, but I just wanted to raise it so that we all are thinking about how to deal with that. Any other comments, questions, concerns? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, we're not adjourned.
Executive session.
Oh, executive session.
Well, we're going to...
Yes.
Assess, correct?
Oh, we go into executive session.
We're going to make a motion to enter into executive session now.
If there that.
There is. I would offer a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the discipline or dismissal of complaints against the Community Development and Planning Office Manager pursuant MGL section thirty A, excuse me, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, one, not to reconvene in open session thereafter.
Aye.
All right, all those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye, three, zero, zero. Thank you all very much.